But welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting on July 16th, 2024. Welcome. Glad to have you here today. As usual, we will start our meeting with our chaplain prayer and pledges, and we are pleased Chaplain Ralph Dawkins is here to lead us in both of those. Thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke your word through prayer into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. You are a God of justice, wisdom, and mercy. So I ask that you would give them the character and help them to listen with understanding and goodwill and a sense of fairness with all that come before them. Give them a sense of spirit, a spirit of service. Remind them that they are stewards under your authority. Father, I pray that you would give these servant leaders knowledge, discernment, and courage on how to best deal with the community, the families, and the facilities and businesses by resolving any issue that comes before them. Even in their executive session, lead them, guide them with wisdom, courage, and integrity to consider the concerned citizens and make decisions that will help benefit our city and surrounding community. Your word said that we should pray for our leaders because they watch over us, and they too must give an account for their decisions and considerations. So I lift up the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading and guiding our city. I pray for the police chief and the entire police force, the sheriff's department, that they will continue to protect and serve the residents of our city. I pray for the fire chief and the fire department and all first responders who serve our cities. Lastly, I thank you for continued economic prosperity and safety for our city. May you draw in and attract to our city, industry, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name, amen.
... Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge...
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
We have one proclamation today, which is the National Buffalo Soldier Day, and Harry's going to come down with me as we read this proclamation.
Come forward, please. Welcome. Here than what we're going to do is I'm going to read it. On July 28th, 1866, the United States Congress passed the Army Organization Act allowing black men, including many former slaves, to serve in all black military regiments following the Civil War. The original troops were the 9th and 10th Cavalry and the 38th, 39th, 40th, and 41st Infantry, later reorganized into the 24th and 25th Infantry in 1869. These regiments were established to help rebuild the country and patrol the western frontier during the Indian Wars, paving the way for westward expansion. These soldiers served in various states and countries, including Arizona, California, Kansas, Louisiana, Montana, Nebraska, New York, Oklahoma, Texas, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Cuba, Mexico, and the Philippines. They were recognized for the heroism, notably serving with Theodore Roosevelt and the Rough Riders in Cuba during the Spanish-American War. Their dedication earned at least 22 Congressional Medals of Honor. In 1868, the first black troops reported at Fort Concho in San Angelo, Texas. The 38th and 41st Infantry and the 9th and 10th Cavalry were assigned various duties and participated in many campaigns with distinction until 1885. During the Indian Wars, these soldiers were named Buffalo Soldiers by indigenous peoples of the Great Plains, impressed by their bravery and fierceness. Buffalo Soldiers mapped the West, stretched telegraph lines, served as a police force, acted as park rangers, protected mail stations, and facilitated the development of the nation. In 1948, over 200,000 African-American soldiers witnessed the signing of Executive Order 9981 by President Harry Truman, mandating equal treatment and opportunity for all servicemen members. In 1992, the 102nd Congress established Buffalo Soldiers' Day, recognized annually on July 28. A memorial in San Angelo, Texas was dedicated on July 28th, 2023, through the efforts of local businesses and community members. This memorial, the only one of its kind in Texas, honors the legacy and sacrifices of the Buffalo Soldiers. Today, we celebrate the one-year anniversary of this memorial, recognizing the hard work and dedication of these soldiers and their impact on the community. The legacy of the Buffalo Soldiers will forever live on through this memorial. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim July 28th, 2024, as National Buffalo Soldier Day.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter. City council members, on behalf of Ms. Shirley Spears, I'd like to say thank you for all the support and dedication and time everyone put forth in making sure that we had the Buffalo Soldier Memorial built. We'd like to invite you out to Buffalo Soldier Day on Sunday, July 28th, at 2:00 p.m. at the memorial to celebrate the first-year anniversary, and also at 2:30 p.m. at the commissary at Fort Concho to help us celebrate Buffalo Soldier Day. Thank you. Have a great day.
Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to come forward and offer any public comment on any item not on the agenda?
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Adam Scott. I'm with the San Angelo Police Department. I was asked to come give a brief on the status of the Patrol Division within the San Angelo Police Department by Chief Griffith. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Police Officer Association, for being here, and thank you to the members of the public in attendance, as well as those viewing at home. I've been a police chief for almost three weeks, assistant police chief for almost three weeks. So, young in service, but true in heart. I sat across from the former Assistant Police Chief Tracy Finch for eight years, and we discussed staffing. Staffing is a concern with any organization, but especially the Police Department when public safety is paramount. When the public calls, a uniform shows up to help in some form or fashion. That fashion may be changing attire, investigating a burglary, or saving a life. So, to understand the Patrol Division is to understand the meaning of those calls for service that we respond to where the possibility of life and limb is always a concern. Within the Patrol Division, we have anti-crime unit, Lake Division, K-9, and traffic enforcement. In order to effectively staff patrol at appropriate levels of service, we had to reappropriate officers throughout the department as the first-line officer and uniformed services is paramount to the public, both for their safety and fellow officers as well. I'll leave you with a number, or I'll start with a number. 180 officers is what the San Angelo Police Department slots they have available for staffing. Currently, we sit at 150, 30% or 30 officer decrease. Calls for service, total calls for service from year-to-date, January of 2024, current, this includes initiated contacts by police officers, as well as public-initiated events, Most of that lays on the shoulders of the Patrol Division. Of those calls for service, public-initiated 15,600 events. The public calls us to change that tire or to save that life. Of those 15,6,500 required extra investigations, reports, and such, doesn't stop with the Patrol Division. It doesn't stop with the investigations, but it stops when some sort of justification for the victim, sort of satisfaction, is laid in court. An increase in services that are required...
You'll need to wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Craig Thomason. I'm an Assistant Chief with the San Angelo Police Department, and I kind of just wanted to give you all an update in regards to manpower. Kind of put some things into perspective in regards to the training division, as well as the criminal investigation divisions within the San Angelo Police Department, kind of what we're working with, just like I said, to kind of put things into perspective. Currently, in our criminal investigations division, we're five detectives short. We're running with about 10. With a 10-man on-call rotation, you run into extreme burnout. We don't want to get to the point where we're starting to cut services or requiring these guys to get their sleep and hold a crime scene overnight and investigate it during the day, but we're going in that direction. Same with cutting services such as investigating misdemeanors, such as your petty thefts, your mail thefts, your burglary of motor vehicles, as well as our cold cases. We used to have detectives working on these cold cases, these murders, and doing well at solving them, but right now, in the situation that we're in with manpower, it's not ideal. We're also dealing with our crime scene investigators. There's a possibility of a mass exodus of those individuals, those highly-trained individuals, that will come here, get that training, and then go off to better-paying jobs. Right now, with our training division, training's key. Y'all know this in regards to law enforcement. A highly-trained officer is a competent officer. A competent officer is a safe officer. Lawsuits are typically lower when you get the training you need. Right now, with the manpower issues, we're looking at having to outsource a lot of that training, just due to the cadre not being big enough. Narcotics, right now, we're working on creating a task force due to being three detectives short. We're trying to consolidate other departments within this county to make a task force actually happen so we can get these narcotics off the street. Because y'all know as well as I do, petty thefts are typically, there's a nexus there to narcotics. So, right now, that's kind of what we're dealing with. Manpower's a problem, and I don't want to see it get any worse because we've really got to hold on to the folks we have right now. Because as y'all know, it takes about a year to train up a rookie cop before they actually count as a body on patrol. So, we don't want to get to the point where we are treading right now, and we don't want to drown. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
My name is Travis Griffith. I'm Police Chief here. This is not a grandstand. This is not something, I just, it's important. We ran on accountability. We ran on transparency, right? And we've gotten to a state where we've been in office for about two weeks for the Assistant Chiefs and about three weeks for me. Through that time, we've been working through what we see as the issues, and the first thing we started looking at was overall staffing. And as we started going through those numbers, we've had a lot of things that are outside of our area of control. And I want to say that this is not the fault of any one person, council, staff, or previous administration. This is ongoing, and I look at this as an opportunity for us to work together, to be a part of the same team and be on the same course of action. And as somebody who has worked in the water department before, wastewater department, been a heavy equipment operator, worked as an EMT halfway through my paramedics, I understand the nature of city business. I understand the jobs and what it takes to get those jobs done, and I appreciate those jobs. With that being said, when we're 30 officers short, it becomes a major issue in regards to the safety of our community, and I believe it needs to be said. We're looking at just right at 20% of our workforce is gone. That's 20% of what we're able to do to respond to your crimes, to your needs and investigations. As we brought it up, we kind of piecemealed out to show patrol and investigations. To be able to still respond and have the service level that we've been enjoying here in San Angelo, we've cut every major portion we can. Cut all the fat I can. I don't see any other way to do that. And the problem that we're facing nationwide is we're on a huge turn-down. Like, we've never seen the lowest amount of recruits coming out across the board, not just in San Angelo. This is across the board. You might say, well, we can compare that to the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department grows those up out of their jail. So they're able to cultivate those guys, send them, this is long-term stuff, in which we're looking at every option we can for recruiting. We requested funds to be able to recruit folks that are currently certified, which I appreciate y'all working that through the contract, but we need funds for that. We need funds to travel. And one thing that, I wasn't even aware of this being an issue of salaries. I thought this would be negotiated later on, but it was brought to my attention that this is something that's going to be brought up in the next meeting. And so I think it's important to know that I provided a way that doesn't raise taxes, that we can get the funding where we need to be, and I'm a layman. I'm not going to tell you that I know everything. This is what I've been able to figure out in a few weeks, and maybe I'm completely off course, but it's at least something that I could say that we don't have to make major adjustments so we can get that, those salaries where they need to be. Because if we continue to lose the people that we're at, we're not going to be able to replace them. Abilene's our closest sister city. They pay $25,000 more. I will wrap it up. Yes, ma'am. That pays $25,000 more in almost every metric, and they're seeing 20 officers down. They can't replace it. We can try to throw money at it, but what we can do to use to that money is to be able to hold that, the officers where they need to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment? With no one else coming forward to offer public comment, we will move on into our consent agenda. I will start with Larry and ask him if there's any item that he would like to pull.
Item J.
Item J. Karen? Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy? With that, I would like a motion on the floor, please, for approval of the consent agenda, item A through K, with the exception of J. May I have a motion for approval? It's a move by Harry. Do I have a second? A second by Tom? I thought we were going to be weak on that. Didn't look like this was starting out the way we wanted it to start out today. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any public comment concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, item A through K, with the exception of J, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? With none opposed, motion passes 7-0. We will now go into item J, which is Consider a Resolution Amending Reasonable Rules for Public Comments to be effective October 1, 2024. And Heather, you're on for this.
Okay. What questions do you have?
I think there needs to be more discussion about this. In the main, I think it's very sensible, except for the portion of putting the public comments at the end of the meeting. I think it has a chilling effect, and I think that it, in a practical sense, it seems unrealistic to have people who show up for this to have a job, and then three hours later, they get an opportunity to put their pitch in. I think that's very poorly decided.
Sure. Okay. I think in staff discussions, the reason that that kind of came about was the fact that city council meetings are business meetings. This is where the city holds city business and gets everything done. And so I think the idea behind putting it at the end was to get the city business out of the way, and then after that is when, you know, the public can come and speak about things that had not been spoken about in that business meeting.
But realistically, it basically defeats the purpose of the public comments because you'll have fewer people who will be willing to spend three or four hours of their day to come in and make their comments at the end of our meeting.
Well, public comment is still available for all items on the agenda. The open-mic public comment is for items that are not on the agenda, where citizens also have the opportunity to reach out to their council members, to city staff, if it's regarding a certain department, things of that nature. So, again, that was the idea behind putting that in there, but it obviously is open to council discussion.
Thank you.
Yes. Harry?
I agree with Councilman Miller. Having somebody come in and wait two or three or four hours for them to have the opportunity to speak, most people are not going to do that. They've got lives they've got to take care of. I like the adjustment in the other rules, but having public comment at the end of the council meeting is not something I want to vote for.
What are the other rules that you do like? You said you like portions of it that you like. What is it you like?
Well, I like what we've talked about in having them register, talking about a specific topic, keeping them on the topic as we go through that, and making sure we're talking about city business, things that this council or the city staff can handle. Those things, I think, I can vote for. I just can't vote for the, after the council meeting, for public comment.
Question. How many cities and what other organizations did we look at to determine how to handle public comment? Are we unique in this request? Is this something that happens in other cities? Give me some background on this.
There's over a dozen. Heather and I independently did our own research, and we kind of focused on different things, and we looked at different cities. I also included Tom Green County, who does not have an open-mic period, and S.A.I.S.D., who has some rules regarding decorum that we also incorporated, as well as, I think, on their public comment period, that any kind of concerns about teacher performance is directed elsewhere because, you know, if you were going to be talking about an employee of the city's performance, it would be done in executive session. We want to try to maintain that confidentiality for our employees. I also looked at Odessa, Midland, Lubbock, Abilene, Wichita Falls, Denton, Waco, Amarillo, and Corpus. The open-mic public comment is still out there, but it is definitely something that is falling to the wayside in a lot of cities. Some of the cities have one public comment period, and they combine open-mic comments, as well as any comment you might have on the agenda. I think Midland is one of the cities that does have it at the end, after they conduct all of their business. So, any of these suggestions are not anything that we just created. It is something that somebody else is doing somewhere.
So are you saying Tom Green County does not allow public comment at the beginning of the meeting?
When I called over there and asked, "Do you allow open-mic comments?", the answer was like, "No." They do allow you to offer comment on any item that's on the agenda. You do have to sign in in there. Because it's a commissioner's court, you actually have to swear an oath before you provide comment.
And the school district?
There's some of those folks here, but they do have public comment period. I do believe it is at the beginning of their meeting. They do have comments that are made during the discussion about public comment, referring complaints against teachers to some other place, and they have rules of decorum that they go over prior to allowing people to speak as well.
So the cities that you just listed, are those cities that allow public comment currently at the beginning of the meeting? Or are these cities that only do public comment at the end of the meeting?
It is a variety. Odessa's at the beginning. Midland is at the end. Lubbock is the beginning, but they're one of those cities that does the agenda and open-mic comments at the same time. Abilene's still at the beginning. They're very much like us, as is Wichita Falls. Denton has numerous ways. They do allow public comment. It seems to like, certain meetings, it's at different times. They also have an e-comment system where people can provide comments electronically prior to a meeting that are then provided to council members for the meeting. Waco has a period at the end of the meeting. You have to register, and they have pretty strict rules of decorum in offering those comments. Amarillo combines open comments and agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, and then Corpus does not allow any comments at all, no open comments.
My question would be, just one minute here, and then I'll get to you. My question would be, very often, the mayor has used the public comment time period to talk about big issues, to address things that might be going on that are not agenda items. There are other city council, I mean, sorry, city employees that come forward to make public comment announcements that we think are important to be made. And so my question is, when would we allow, quote, "a mayor and/or council members and/or other city employees to have an opportunity to make public announcements", which are important because it's on 17 channel?
My mic's not working. Right now, that is during the public comment period, provided it's not something that is coming before us on a future agenda. It's just general discussion. There are some cities that have a specific time period in their agenda for those kind of comments to be made, and it's kind of disclosed in advance what the comments are going to be about, so it's just part of the regular meeting. But right now, it would be during the public comment period that that happens.
For me, I think we should separate, quote, "public comment", general public comment, from announcements. And I think there needs to be a portion of the agenda that says announcements so that anything that is of public interest, or things that are going on in the city of public interest, or issues of public interest, be allowed at the beginning of a meeting as an announcement. And so I separate announcements from public comment. Harry?
Just another comment. I happen to chair the Council Valley Transit District, and we have public comment at the beginning of every meeting. That just, it offers somebody here locally that does this. I'd like to see it stay at the beginning of the meeting, but limited to some of the changes that are proposed.
Which are the changes you want to keep?
I want them to register. I want them to have a specific topic. I want them to be able to stay on topic and talk about city issues, city items that the council can address or the staff can address.
Heather, you want to read how the language, what the language is as it relates to Harry's public comment, public comment, on the agenda, consent agenda item?
Sure. So just each member of the public wishing to speak shall sign in with the city clerk or board secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting, indicate what item they wish to provide comment, and will be called to speak by the city clerk or board secretary in order of signature. Let's see. All members of the public addressing the governing body shall introduce themselves by first and last name, give their home address and/or single-member district, and the new language being, shall make comments relevant to the authority of the city. I'm sorry. I'm trying to pick out the new pieces. It's okay. So in regards to Councilmember Thomas's comments, those are the new pieces of the agenda, or I'm sorry, the proposed resolution.
agenda, or, I'm sorry, the proposed resolution.
Okay, so, Harry, you are in support of registering before the meeting starts with their desire to speak?
I'm in support of all of the proposed amendments to public comment, except at the, keeping it at the end of the meeting. I want to keep it at the beginning. All the rest of those that are proposed, I support.
Further comment or question? Tommy?
Just, a thought just occurred to me while sitting here. I'm going to, whether this is accurate or not, I don't know, but we do have, from time to time, folks that I'm thinking either might be consultants. We know we have had professional counsel for some of the folks that have come before us. An attorney would be an example, that I would assume they are paying those folks probably by the hour. So that is a consideration. If they have to wait until the end to have that, that may be something. But I guess you could turn that around the other way, too. Anyway, it just occurred to me, that might be something to factor into our thinking. They may be paying somebody to be there with them.
Generally, I think when that's occurred, if I'm not mistaken, is when there has been something that goes before the planning commission that has not gone the way they want it to, so they're here to speak about that item that then happens to be on a consent agenda and/or regular agenda for city council approval. So in that case, that's really not public comment. It's about the item that they disagree with in terms of how a vote was taken at a previous meeting.
I agree with that, too, Mayor.
So, yes, Tom?
We don't want to rob anybody of their opportunity to come talk, but there have been times where people don't have a platform that anybody else has traction, and they have come up here, and it has just been a get-lost-in-the-reads renegade, totally off-topic, and it's painful for everybody. And those are the things we don't want people to sit through. And I get that. And so a lot of this is brought up, is how do we mitigate those? But I think everything y'all brought about, stay on topic, they have to sign in, they have to register. If they get off-topic, and this is kind of going to be, there'll be a lot of interpretation on y'all's part of when somebody drifts off of it, but much like PD did this morning, they brought two public comments that are tied to things that are on the agenda and discussion today. No problem with that. That works fine.
Well, they can't speak and public comment about agenda items. The difference between what they did is the fact that their comments are relevant to the budget agenda, not the regular agenda. So, and typically, we wouldn't do that, yeah.
I get that, and you're seeing what I'm talking about. But sometimes people use our mic as their free advertising, and that's just what irritates me. They have something that has totally nothing to do with city business, but they come and take advantage of this time. And, you know, I'm one step short of saying you should bill them for that, but long story short, if you don't have a platform that doesn't have enough traction, I get tired of people coming and using the city's time. And there's lots of people that have brought it up to me that said, "Why was that person there? Didn't have anything to do?" And I said, "I understand it." And a lot of what we're talking about now comes with that. But I'll step in there with Harry. There's lots of things we need to, I would say, put some parameters on, is how far they can get and how far off-venue, you know, or being germane to the topics of the day. I have no problem being with it at the front. I think if you move it to the back, that, you know, God only knows, sometimes we go on here for hours, sometimes we're done in 45 minutes. It's a crapshoot. So much like this little dissertation of mine, it's hard to get that all in three minutes.
Thank you for that dissertation.
Absolutely.
Karen?
Just throwing my support behind Councilman Thomas and the other speakers, I want to point out that the city's organizational chart has the citizens of San Angelo at the very top. And so I think leaving the public comment at the beginning with the parameters proposed, which are excellent, that's the way to go.
Lucy?
My comment is, as it is, I think some of our citizens, I put myself in there as well, you know, you're ready to come in here in the morning, and you're ready to say, "I want to get this out of the way. Let me talk first." And if we put it at the back, it'll give a more reason for them to say, "No, they didn't let me talk, and I wasn't going to wait three hours." And you lose your little courage that you come in with in the morning. So for me, I say, leave it in the front, leave it at the beginning. And I do like the fact that they do register, they do put down what they're going to talk about, they will not rear off onto something else that is not of anybody else's business. But I definitely would like to see it stay at the beginning.
Do we specify that if they register to speak, that they speak about one subject only? Or do we allow multiple topics to be discussed? And do we still maintain the time limit?
The time limit is maintained to three minutes unless they are the applicant or proponent of a certain item, then they get the five minutes. As long as whenever they sign in at the beginning and list the items that they want to speak about, so if they want to speak about the streets item and the water item and whatever, then they can speak to each comment, to each item.
So they would be able to speak two or three times, depending on the number of topics that they want to discuss? Or that within the three-minute window, all subjects would be, have to be done within that three-minute window?
Well, I think, to some degree, kind of talking about two different matters. The open mic, so to speak, the public comment at the beginning that we just finished, that's about items that are not on the agenda.
Correct.
However, for each item that is on the agenda, when you call for public comment, those public comments would be limited to the three minutes also, and citizens, as they are now, would be able to speak to those items as long as they have registered for comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, but my question is the following. If I have three issues I want to talk about, and none of those issues are on the regular agenda, but they're absolutely individual items, meaning they're not related, they're each unique in what they are about?
They can speak to those in the open-mic portion of the meeting. That's just a lot of information to get in three minutes, so they would need to...
I know that. My point is, in three minutes, if they register and say, "I want to," I'm going to make this up, but if I want to talk about animal control and water and streets, I must keep my comments on all of those three items within the three-minute window.
That is correct.
They don't get three minutes per topic, even though they listed those topics when they registered?
No. In the open portion, you get three minutes, start to finish, and as many topics as you can get in that you signed in to speak on in that time limit.
Karen?
Just clarifying, your statement that they must be items that the city has governance over?
Yes.
Not...
It can't be personal items, or "I don't like my neighbor," and "my neighbor has," but "my neighbor has trash," but trash is a city ordinance and a code enforcement issue. So it is city business. So it would have to be way outside the parameter of city oversight. Correct? Other questions, comments from, yes, Tommy?
Who's the monitor? Is that going to be the city clerk?
Yes, and my trustee team member, Teresa here.
Okay, all right. So then, that takes it off of the mayor to do that?
For the other boards, because this is for city council and all of the other city boards and commissions, it would be the board secretaries. If the board doesn't have a secretary, then it would be the staff liaison for that board.
Okay.
So to be clear, what is presented in our packet pertains to not only city council meetings, but all board meetings? Correct. So it does not, I mean, it's inclusive of every board and city?
That is correct, Mayor.
Further questions or comments? All right, so who's going to make a motion that is inclusive, or adds to, or subtracts from the information presented in our packet?
Mr. Miller?
Larry, you pulled it, you get to speak.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept it as written with the exception of the requirement that they present their public comments at the end.
I would like to suggest this as well, if I could, that we have a separate section on the agenda that would be called announcements, to separate public comment, if you will, from announcements. Now, that might make that very complicated, because if I'm coming here, an announcement should be limited to city employees only, because, I would say this. So if I have, the reason I'm saying this is because if I have an event this weekend, and I want the public to know about it, I want to announce my event. Is that, Teresa, is that an announcement, or is that a public comment?
And that would be an announcement. We already do have that on the agenda, but it's at the end of the meeting, so it would just be a matter of moving that forward.
So that would be a suggestion that I would have, or not? Or not? Would you like to change your motion, or would you like to leave it as it is?
I would like to include the announcement portion, too.
As a separate agenda item at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Public comment.
Anna Vartosh, a single-member District One. Just listening to you guys discuss, you do represent the citizens of the city, and that should be, as she said, the top of the list, I believe Karen said that, is the top of the list. So you should certainly listen to the citizens of the city, because that's why you are where you are. They elected you. So be very careful not to stifle their free speech. You're getting very close to trampling on that First Amendment. Thank you.
Well, I think the issue is, we're not wanting to limit anybody's opportunity for free speech. It's just when you do it, and that's really the conversation. Do you do it at the beginning, or do you do it at the end? But not limiting that opportunity. So it's, yeah. Thank you. Further public comment?
And I would say that putting it at the end is limiting comment. And I would agree that it makes it, I mean, a lot of the discussion at the begin, I mean, I appreciate consensus now, but the feeling I was getting as it was going through the process was that it's us and them, and that it's a top-down. And I agree with what Anna was saying. Are you wanting to have us be a San Angelo, or, you know, this exclusive city council and UPEons down here? And so the term "important" was used, which really triggered me. If we're not considered important because we don't have big funds, or we don't have lawyers, or, so I appreciate that what you all have come to, and the process was very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comment? Just one second.
Jamal Shomper, single-member District Number Two. Mayor, I would advise y'all to look at the municipal code. It doesn't...
Which code?
The municipal code with the ordinance. It doesn't delegate the responsibility to interrupt anyone in their conversation or during their comment, except for you. You can update it and allow them to kind of garner the conversation and stay on topic. But the problem I have with staying on topic is that I will stay on topic, but when the boards and y'all members get off-topic in different departments, I address that, and then I'm stopped with my comment. And then there has been other times, I've been stopped before I can make my comment because they thought it was off-topic. So when we get into the educational aspect of this English, what's on topic and what's not, I would be very careful, because it is stifling free speech. And then when we go back to the portion of the public comment where you can't bring pictures, that's a form of expression in the freedom of speech. And we are, like, what, the Texas Capitol art, art expression? But as far as it goes with the public comment, I've actually enjoyed it. I thought things have worked very well. I've talked to you guys about things. Y'all responded, made some changes. I actually liked it. I don't think you should change anything. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Oh, Lucy, you have one?
Yes, I just need to make a comment. And I wanted to say, yeah, y'all, the citizens are, that's what y'all elected us for, so you're very important to us when you come and speak to us. And I encourage people when they ask me about something, and they're complaining about it, I go, "Well, go to our council meetings and express your concerns." So I think during public comment, it helps us find out what is going on out there that we're not aware of. So when you come to us and you go, "This portion of the city is so-and-so's happening over there," that we can look into it. So public comment is very important when it comes from our citizens, and I'd like to thank each and every one of them that do have the courage to come up here and talk to us and let us know what's going on.
Further public comment? Is this an announcement or a public comment?
Just a couple of questions for clarification. Carl White, Parks and Recreation Director. Mayor, you stated that city staff can make the announcements. I assume also city council could. A question would be, could board members also make those announcements? If not, then I suppose the city's staff could, or council member could. The other question is, to register to speak, do you have to physically be here to register to speak to an item, or could that be online after the agenda's been posted? Just a couple of questions.
Well, if the agenda, yeah, well, once the agenda's posted, you would know what is or is not available for public comment, correct? So, other comments? Karen, Larry? All right, so there is no further public comment. So the motion on the floor is to change the item, the resolution, where we would include at the beginning of the meeting announcements, which to me would be public announcements, something the public needs to know about, whether it's street closures, whether it is something that's happened that needs to be addressed. And then we would leave the public comment section at the beginning of the meeting, not at the end of the meeting, but we would leave the rest of the resolution as written, with the exception of those two things. Is that what you're saying, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the motion on the floor and the second?
That's correct.
And then we've had public comments, so we'll take a vote. All of those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We will now move on to the regular agenda.
Mayor, can I add one thing to that?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the item was posted to state that it would not be effective until October 1st to give us an opportunity to educate and to create the sign-in sheets and those sorts of things.
Yes. Perfect, thank you. Is that an announcement? All right. Regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Apricots proponents and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is considered approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of San Angelo, the city of Abilene, and the city of Midland that initiates the first phase of the development of the Fort Stockton water supply that includes project alignment and routing, cooperative strategies, and municipal well permitting activities, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Daniel, this is on you.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Yes, it is on me. Just a quick refresher, we've been working with the cities of Midland and Abilene now for 13 years. We call it the West Texas Water Partnership. Back in May 14th of 2020, we did an inter-local agreement securing the water that we need for our future moving forward, which is 5,000 acre-feet of water. Now, we're at the point where we need to move forward with the phases to initiate the project itself. Now, we did a lot of negotiations, a lot of discussions with other city managers to come up with a structure that'll work for the three communities, using Technical Advisory Committee... using technical advisory committees and also policy committees. The technical advisory committee is made up of the city managers and the water utilities directors and, of course, policy committees made up of the mayors, who set policy direction. The structure that we came up with really truly sets us up as a true partnership. And we really liked the way it was structured. I have to thank Teresa for that. She did wonderful work putting together the verbiage and the MOU, which was sent back and went back and forth numerous times. And we finally came up with one that I am actually quite pleased with. Now, you read it in the caption. The purpose for the MOU at this point is to move forward with that first phase. And that first phase covers the alignment and routing study that needs to be done. CRMWD, cooperative strategies, basically, we're going to have to use some of their infrastructure in order to transport some of the water. So those are things that we're working on as well. And also strategies and working with the Middle Pecos Groundwater Conservation District when it comes to municipal permits, evaluating the models for the groundwater and so forth. So at this point, I think we're at a really good place. The cities of Abilene and Midland agree with this MOU. As a matter of fact, we're the first city to actually present it to our city councils. And it is my recommendation that we move forward and approve this MOU.
My biggest issue has in the past, and for all the right reasons, been that we must be on equal status and equal stand with the other two cities. It's not a partnership if one city tries to dominate the conversation and dominate the partnership. And that has been our struggle for how many years now? About seven, six, something like that? So this new memorandum puts the three cities on equal turf. No one city dominates the other two cities.
That is correct.
Or no two cities dominate the other city.
No, for the decision-making, absolutely, like I mentioned, the city managers, water utility directors, and mayors will be involved with the decisions that'll be made moving forward. And that's what we wanted and that's what we got on there.
One of our strategies as a council from the very beginning has been to ensure that the citizens of San Angelo do not have to ever worry about having water. Water is a key component of establishing quality of life and is essential for economic development. If there's any fear of not having water, then people don't want to look at you, don't want to live here, don't want to come and move here. So water is a number one issue. We've struggled getting this document ready for approval and it has been truly work.
Yes, ma'am. There's been a lot of changeover, you know, the different cities. There's been a lot of changeovers. So again, yes, it's been a lot of work to get it to where we are satisfied with the end product. And again, Teresa, thank you. I think at this point, we're all ready to move forward. And again, as I mentioned, we didn't enter local agreement back in 2020. Now it's time to really get this thing going, to start moving on to the first phases and multiple phases. This is only the first MOU that you'll see. You'll see multiple MOUs will be coming to you as we advance toward other phases as well.
We must have 75 years or more water supply. And that's what is key to this. Other, yes, Karen?
First of all, congratulations to Teresa and Daniel. I know it's been a hard-fought battle. A couple of quick questions about money. What is the financial commitment associated with the partnership? That's my first question. And the second question is, how are we paying for the water that comes from this partnership?
There is not a dollar amount yet. As we start working toward the consultants and also the advisors that we'll be using for the project, we'll come up with a set amount. But again, we do have our water, of course, our water rates through our water department and its funds, fund balances that are established. That's how we will work through actually the payment. And we'll talk more about that here in the future as we start looking at the need for paying some of the infrastructure that'll be going in here in the future. Now, this doesn't call for, the monies that'll be connected with this will be minimal because really what we're looking at is routing studies. We're looking at more of the strategies that go along with the project itself. So at this point, we're not ready to start talking about the total amount because we still don't know exactly what that looks like. And so we start doing the studies.
But we do know to get water from Fort Stockton to San Angelo will have a dollar amount attached to it. But the wisdom of a previous mayor, Alvin New, who made sure that the citizens had a vote in terms of how we would pay for our infrastructure and our water. He made sure that part of the strategy on the half-cent sales tax vote, the citizens voted on. And he got the citizens to vote in approval because 72% of the half-cent sales tax money would go to pay for water. He knew, we know, you can't have a city without a future of water. And Alvin made that happen through his work in getting the citizens to vote on the money allocation out of the half-cent sales tax fund.
Mayor, I do want to point out that this is a pro rata share based on the 28,400 acre feet that's acquired between the three entities. Our need for the future was the 5,000 acre fee, which comes out to 17.6% of the actual cost and expense that goes into what our portion will be. So it's done on a pro rata share based on the volume of water that the cities are taking. So the city of San Angelo would have the lowest, it'll have the lowest portion as far as what's going to be paid. However, when it comes to say and how the monies will be spent, we have a good voice, we have a great voice in that.
And that's what this memorandum does, is give us equal voice, which we needed. Okay, so Harry?
Just a real quick comment. Again, Daniel, you and Teresa, thank you. This has been a long roll. This MOU establishes this true partnership will be the model for future MOUs. We know that councils, city managers, city attorneys change. So getting everybody on the same page at this time will help for future MOUs as we go. So thank you again, and I think this will be one of the best things that's happened to the citizens of San Angelo. Appreciate it.
Further comments from council? Yes, Tom?
It's been a long battle. Congratulations for y'all getting this done. Participation in this MOU also opens up common other water sources in the future where we can trade our rights back and forth between common sources. And for people that maybe don't understand where we're going, if somebody both shares, if we both share rights to, say, IV and this one, we can trade our rights back and forth. So the whole point of this one and that relationship may continue to go on with other water sources that are found in the future with this partnership. So just congratulations to y'all for getting this thing pulled off. It's been a long one.
May I have a motion for approval of this item A, the memorandum of understanding?
So move.
I have two people who have made a motion. May I have a second? Second. Second by Lucy. Public comment, please. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item A, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Motion passes seven zero. Item B, receive a presentation from Specialized Public Finance Incorporated regarding the proposed plan of finance for the City of San Angelo, Texas, Tax Note Series 2024 and direct Specialized Public Finance Incorporated to proceed with such plan of finance. And we have Vince? No, we have Tina.
Yes, ma'am. Here, if you should have any questions regarding the process of what we're doing. But you're well aware by now that we are proposing to issue debt. We're calling that a rolling debt plan and that will replace the general fund transfer out to equipment replacement and fire truck. It will also yield some capacity for some projects on a short-term basis. And so those include, so the rolling debt portion includes equipment replacement at $3.6 million. We usually transfer out 1.8 per year, so that's for a two-year period. Fire truck, same thing. We usually transfer out 250 a year, again, a two-year period. Public safety radio infrastructure, we're proposing to use $1.5 million for that. And then river stage improvements at just over $1.1 million. We do have additional capacity there of a little over $700,000, which we will discuss during the general fund budget workshop or later on as we are directed by city council.
All right. Any questions for Tina at this point? All right. Then do we need Vince or not?
Not unless you have any questions.
All right, so may I have a motion?
He'll be back August 19th when we actually award the bid, so.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve item B?
Motion to approve.
I get a double on that again. We're doing good, guys. A second?
Second.
Second by Tom E. With that, may I open it up for public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B is approved, seven to zero. So how's to do that? We are going to move forward on the regular agenda. Item E, which is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-01, a request to extend the historic district to include the two buildings located at 218 and 301 North Oaks Street. And you're on, Erin.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Valenzuela, Erin Benoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this morning, we have a case that went to our Design and Historic Review Commission. It is a expansion of our historic district for two properties at 218 and 301 North Oaks. They, at the time when this case started moving forward, they had a different zoning. That zoning is actually now changed to Central Business District with action that council has taken over the last two meetings. But we have property one there and property two there. And you can see this hatched area in here. This is currently the historic, our downtown historic district where that area starts. You can see another hatched area is a historic property that's been individually overlaid many, many years ago. A beautiful residence that's over there. So the two respective properties, .85 and .128 acres, they're not very large properties. This is in the downtown neighborhood and in District Three, Mr. Harry Thomas. You can see here on the property that happens to be the freshman campus for the central campus of Central High School. You see Building F is the actual property, the main, what we would call the main campus building, although I think their main building is here. This is the historic building that we are wanting to preserve for the history of our community. So here you can see the front of the facade, a beautiful facade, very intricately done back in the late 1920s. There had been multiple designs presented for this building and I may have a picture of one of the designs that did not actually happen. But you can see this Georgian style that's got the beautiful columns and the arched entryway right there. Very, very classic style for that time period. Here's just kind of an overview of the campus that you can actually see the other structures. You can see we're just trying to highlight that one structure, the facade of that structure. Some of the other pictures that we were able to find through history, of course, you can see 1977. You can kind of see a other building, let me put the arrow right there, another building that was there that has since been demolished. You can see that in the 2022 picture, it is not there. The 1947 picture was interesting to me because as we in West Texas have always needed shade, they put some awnings on that structure over time to try to provide some shade. I do like the nice conifer there in 1941. But here's that picture from 1927. One of the designs was a much more Art Deco design, which was a leading design in the 1920s as opposed to the more classical design that they, that we as a community decided on. So here's the gymnasium that's across the road, across Oak Street, that is currently under historic overlay. You can really see that it actually did have some of the elements of Art Deco with the stacks there at the top of the prominence that it has there. Still a very beautiful complimentary building. For some reason, this building has been historically overlaid and within the historic district. And for some reason, we did not do the freshman campus, the main building at that time. Today is the day to move that forward. This is the building at 301 North Oaks. Again, it has some very beautiful architectural features. You can kind of see on the facade up here at the very top, they've clearly got some nice items there. I really like the arch doorways that it both has. From what we understand, this used to be a kind of a sawmill lumberyard. There was an adjacent building that was across the alley where they would do a lot of the work and then they would do raw furniture here. Has been that way according to one of our local historians for a long time until, I would say, in the last couple of decades when it has gone to where it's more of a vacant status. Again, some of the features, as you see very closely, I really like the, again, a nice conifer there. We don't get a lot of those out here in West Texas, but it's a really nice accent piece on this building. So here in this picture in 2007, you can see the adjacent building that was behind. It was much more plain and more of a box design as opposed to having all the elements here. And you can kind of see where that building has changed over time. So this did go to our Design and Historic Commission last month. They did have a good, strong discussion. Most of their discussion was why at this time are we moving forward with this? And the answer is really anytime you can preserve a piece of our local history, now is the time instead of down the future, down the road. We have to preserve those pieces that are critical to our downtown area, that are critical to our history, that are critical to drawing people to our community and have personal ties in our community. And we believe both of these structures represent that. Staff's recommendation is to move forward with the historic district overlay or extension of the downtown historic district over these two properties at 218 and 301 North Oaks. The Design and Historic Commission also voted six to one in favor of that recommendation to the city council as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do I have questions for Erin from council? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
So move by Harry?
Second.
Second by Lucy. It's now open for public comment.
First of all, sorry. First of all, thank you for moving the item up forward. I really appreciate that. My name is Taylor Kingman, single member District Five. I'm here today as representation of the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees as board president. It's my job as board president to let y'all know that we voted seven oh in opposition of this designation. We didn't do that because we plan on selling it or demolishing it. We did that because under Texas Education Code, Chapter 11, Subchapter D, it is our job as an elected board to be stewards of taxpayer dollars that are collected by the district and the buildings and promoting student success. In a conservative town such as ours, we feel that putting an appointed board over our duly-elected board and then putting that board in control of how taxpayer dollars are spent is not what San Angelo public would like to do. We are currently in the process of doing a district assessment and recommendation that will be completed by the end of 2024, prior to any council or school board election. We have asked city previously to hold this item until we can come up with a 10-year plan for the district so that we can put all the items on the table and we can know exactly what we're trying to save or not save this building from. The Historic Resources Survey of 2020, which was used for the adoption of the downtown overlay as well as the historic overlay, was adopted just two years ago in June of 2022. Over 78 acres of downtown San Angelo were identified. If you look at that map, we're not even on the map. Although there are multiple buildings that were designated as either high priority, low priority, or mid-priority, we were not even included in the assessment. As a board, we feel that rumor and innuendo is driving the timing of this and we feel that is no way to set public policy when it comes to our taxpayer dollars. Regardless, though, of how the city council votes on this in August, we as a school board understand that it is important for our city council and our school board to work hand in hand because a board with the goals of promoting student success for the students of San Angelo and the city council should be able to agree and go hand in hand. If unwilling to table this item until December, we at least ask that you think about adding an exemption for any decision regarding school security to not have to- security to not have to go before the DHRC board. We have, we have mandates by the state, and we have a responsibility to parents, and to put us in front of an appointed board that we could delay anything we do as far as school safety also seems to be poor policy. Thank you for your time. Appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you, Taylor. Public comment?
Good morning. Andy Markey, District Five, speaking on behalf of downtown, and I'm going to read a letter from Monica Ramos, Executive Director of Downtown San Angelo. Downtown San Angelo fully supports the proposed expansion of the historic overlay as it will help preserve the architectural and aesthetic character of the properties in the downtown neighborhood. It will most importantly protect the heritage of our community. Historic buildings give our district its character. They attract visitors, they tell stories, and our educational components connecting our past to our present. It is concerning that some are opposed to this proposal. Without the overlay, we fear two eighteen and three oh one North Oaks could face demolition or unrecognizable alterations that will not within our, that will not fit within our historic downtown San Angelo vision. These two properties have been preserved for so long, why would we not want to continue to protect them? History of the building. The San Angelo Junior College is dear to our hearts, and it tells a story of triumph from our citizens of San Angelo. After an unsuccessful nineteen twenty-three bid to be selected as the home of the Texas Technological College, the residents of San Angelo decided they would create their own college, even if they had to pay for it themselves. Funded by local contributions and self-imposed county tax, San Angelo Junior College opened its doors in nineteen twenty-eight on North Oak Street near downtown San Angelo. The San Angelo Junior College was the preface of what would later become Angelo State University. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Oh, wait. Oh, hold on. Oh, wait, one second. Yes, Bill, come on.
Bill, then, Tom, Tom Thompson's district, on behalf of the school board, we have not abandoned that facility. We are still using some facilities that are newer in the back of that property to operate our, our CATE programs right now, our CTE program. So we have not abandoned it at present, but some of the buildings right now have become unoccupable, occupable because of some of the infrastructure issues that exist, not only within the building but within the property itself, just a side note. Thank you.
Just to be clear on the issue, no, it's okay, Bill, you're, yeah. So including it in the historic district overlay does not mean that you cannot do whatever you need to the interior of the building. It simply says you cannot change the exterior of the building. And within the historic, Texas Historic Commission, or Texas Historic documents, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of what you can do to help make it more affordable, but it does not keep anyone from doing what they need to do to use the interior of the building. It's simply preserving the exterior facade of the building. Yes, Tom?
So can they sell it? I mean, if it becomes a burden to the school district, can they sell it?
Sure.
Absolutely. It's their property. They can, they can sell it to however their process is to, to make a, a sale of that property, yes.
Okay.
The, the zoning is Central Business District. This is a historic overlay to preserve the facade of that one building, not all the buildings, just the one building. And as Chairman Keeman, Dr. Keeman mentioned, that, you know, they have some state mandates for security of different things, and the city is really willing to work very strongly with them to make sure it works for that structure. However, they choose to use that structure in the present and in the future, we're willing to work with them, and it's just really maintaining that outside facade.
So we, do we need to voice that joint, I'd say, agreement now on the security that they're, because that's the one thing Taylor asked for specifically?
Well, I'm going to ask Teresa James to just kind of help make sure I'm clarifying it correctly. So if I misstate something, Ms. James, make sure, this is a rezoning. Usually you cannot condition a rezoning, but I do think we can have a commitment from city staff to work with them when it comes up to security items. Am I stating that correctly, Ms. James?
And I think that, again, I'm not sure there's a lot of security items that are going to change the historic character of this property in such a way that it would require approval. But again, I'm sure Erin and his staff would work very closely with them if that did become the case.
Okay, so my, my final question to y'all is if for some reason unforeseen to us ten years, twenty years in the future, to where this does need to count it down, or this does need to change, what is that process? To remove something from the overlay?
The, the reality is the following, you know, we can't predict twenty years from today. I can't predict ten years from today. In fact, I probably can't predict what's going to happen next year.
Tomorrow.
Tornadoes could come through. Okay, so that's asking too broad of a statement. We cannot predict those things. What we can predict is if we don't protect this building, you lose a part of your history. That's the element.
So my question, go back to my question was, how would you, if, if somebody had to take something out of overlay, no matter where it is, what would that process be?
I think it would be the same process that we've gone through today. It would go to DHRC, get their recommendation, and come to council.
That's all I need to know.
Yeah. I should also point out that because the school district is not in favor of this, it will require a super majority vote.
All right, with that, there's a motion, there's a second, we'll take a vote. I'm going to ask each individual city council member to give me their vote, starting with Larry.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Mayor, yes. Motion passes seven zero. We will now move into item C, Consider Approving the Community Accessibility and Connectivity Project CACP Through the North and South Tears Project Areas in Amount of $3,403,000. How did it come to exactly $3,403,000? Exactly?
I'll, I'll leave that technical question to Patrick Ferri, our Director of Operations.
Patrick, you're on.
Well, good morning again, Mayor and City Council and Mr. Valenzuela.
I mean, you're not on.
Yeah. He's on standby, but he's going to get there. So this is a great project that Patrick and his team has put together. This was the project that they did a grant application for and received a large amount of funding. You can see here on the image here, and I'll just briefly go over these. If you have technical details or questions about the actual process for these, I'll certainly let Patrick come in. But you can see, starting over here at Avenue L and Chadburn, there, there's kind of a starting point, if you will, that goes up north through downtown, up the North Chadburn corridor to Twenty-Ninth, takes a left and comes down Twenty-Ninth and turns and goes down Glenna, all the way back down around to Avenue Inn, and then back through across Sherwood Way, back down to ASU, down Johnson Street, and down to Knickerbocker. So a very large trail that connects a huge core of our community together, if you really wanted to walk, bike, or get somewhere. You can see how many total miles is there, but we're talking today about the Tears portion and the portion that the Tears is, look as recommended a funding for. So here in the North Chadburn, this is in the North Tears District. You can see down here in the bottom right is Houston Hart, and it kind of starts there. That's where the North District starts, goes up Chadburn, then it takes this left turn again on Twenty-Ninth. And so for that area over to Golf Course Road, which is right there, the improvements are six point eight million, the local match is one point four, and the design local match is fifty-two thousand. And so that puts that north match of one point five million. This, the south area has a couple of different components, a couple of phases. So if y'all recall, back during the first Chadburn project, there was Phase A. That's already been taken care of and done. This is Phase B, where the design has already been done. Y'all had the foresight to say, let's go ahead and pay for the design, let's get that done. Now we actually have the funding mechanism to come in and do the improvements. And so the improvements for that Phase B is the five million dollars, and so the local match for that area is the one million dollars in that Phase B. So that's from right at Borogard coming up here to just past Fourth Street to Fifth Street, where it connects into the North Tears. In this project, they were also able to improve Borogard, which most of us know along Borogard. That's where a number of businesses have started coming into our town, started a lot of local, small business owners are opening up shops there from restaurants to salons, things like that. And so we're looking at basically, and I'm just going to call this Bryant, but it's not Bryant, but Coenheim from this end over to the Shannon Campus on that end, being able to improve that on both sides is going to be a major win for our downtown for walkability, ADA accessibility, getting in and out of those areas that those businesses are coming to. So that's going to be very, very important. So those improvements for that area, two point nine million, local match of five hundred and eighty thousand, and the design match for that area is fifty-eight thousand for as six hundred and thirty-eight thousand in the South Tears. And then the, the bottom piece is across the river to the south, going south on South Chadburn. You can see that that will go down and stops at the, the terminus of where the South Tears actually has jurisdiction. And so the amount of improvements in that area that the South Tears has a, a ability to give funding is one point one million for the total improvements. Their match, two hundred and twenty thousand, and a twenty-two thousand dollar design match for two hundred and forty-two. And so with that, Patrick and finance kind of talked together and looked at different options for our Tears Board to how to finance this over time. So they had basically four different options. They chose this option over here to recommend, which is a five-year equal match, so an equal amount coming out of the north and the south, and then a final payment of year six out of the south because their contribution is just slightly more than the north contribution. You can see the south total is one point eight, or basically one point nine, and the north is one point five million. And so to do that over the five years, starting in the August twenty twenty-six cycle, that is when our current Chadman funds start, stop being paid for out of the Tears, and this new project will start being paid. And so there's not going to be two projects being paid at the same time. That was intentional, and so that's going to push that out. And so it would finish out, as you can see, in the north in twenty twenty-eight and in the south in twenty twenty-nine. With that, I think that might be our last slide. Do you have any questions for myself or the Director of Operations?
I'm going to open up the floor for questions from council. Larry?
Is this all going to be constructed using existing city right of ways?
As far as I know, I believe there's a couple of areas that they may have to work to obtain some right of way, but I'm not sure. Patrick, I think, has been working on that, and he may have the, the definitive answer.
Yes, sir. So as we go through and we start designing that scope, we'll know that a little bit better, a little bit truer to actuals. But for the most part, it, we do own all the right of way that we're going to need for that project. We may need a corner clip here, a corner clip there, just to make sure that that accessibility is, is usable and functional. But other than that, we do currently own the right of way that we need for the project.
Karen? Oh, no, wait, Larry's not through.
Are, we also figure in maintenance, continuing maintenance on it?
So the maintenance will be a part of, you know, our, our typical operations in the city. Once we get this constructed, it'll be a new sidewalk. It'll require very little maintenance as we go through as far as this structure is concerned. I mean, if we have any amenities that we want to throw in during that, you know, planners or whatever, we can decide that as we move forward with the details of the project. But as far as the grant is concerned, the ADA and the, and the concrete and the walkability is, is going to fall within our normal maintenance activities.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Karen?
Everybody's so calm. The, the impact of this project is going to be huge, absolutely massive. It's super exciting, so congratulations and thank you. Just for my information, can you confirm that the current Tears designation extends to twenty thirty? Is that correct?
It was a thirty-year Tears program.
It was a thirty-year and started in, I believe, two thousand and six, goes to thirty thirty-six.
Okay.
And so we'll still have about five years after this project is paid for.
It'll be in our lifetime. Other questions? Comments? All right, may I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve this.
Seconded by Harry. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. The next item is, there isn't one.
Where did?
D?
Yeah, D.
B.
D.
Oh, sorry. Consider approving Tears Board project recommendation of a project located at nineteen oh one North Chaparral totaling seven thousand seven hundred and fifty for incentives under the North Tears Incentive Program. Erin?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, Erin Benoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. Last item we have today is a North Tears funding request at nineteen oh one North Chadburn. The funding request is seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it is for asbestos abatement. That building is getting reused or revitalized internally. Will no longer be auto sales. It will actually be an entertainment, some type of gaming business there. Taking some hints from last time, I wanted to make sure I put some maps in to make sure that Mr. Miller was sure that he was, wanted to make sure we got you some maps, sir. So this, as you can see, this is one of our major corridors on Chadburn there at Nineteenth Street. I think we've all driven by that business for, for years and years, and once it got vacant, we're like, man, that's a great corner. Somebody should utilize that. You can see the, the area there. It is neighborhood center, so doing a small, general commercial type of small gaming business is probably acceptable. They are working through their change of occupancy right now. With that, the Tears Board did recommend five to zero to recommend the funding at the seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-dollar mark for the asbestos abatement.
Questions? Comments? Yes, Tom?
So who's getting the, the money? The current owner or the future owner?
Well, I believe the future, the, I don't know if they're leasing it or if they're the current owner. I'd have to look at the actual application because the property owner is the one that actually gets the funding to pay for the asbestos abatement. I'm not sure if this is a-
Could be the leasing because they don't own, yeah, so.
Okay.
All right. So may I have a motion for approval of the seven thousand seven hundred and fifty from the North Tears Fund?
So moved.
So moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. Public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now am I complete with the regular agenda? Okay, we'll move into our closed session, executive session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter five five one, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, Section five five one point oh eight seven, Business Prospect Negotiations Regarding Project Zeppelin. We will come back when we're finished with the discussion. This meeting is officially called back to order at ten fifty-seven AM. There are no announcements from our closed session meetings, so we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues, which are Consider Approving Board Nomination, Animal Service Advisory Committee, Penny Roberts, SMD three, to a first term. May I have that motion for approval? So moved by Harry, seconded by Larry. Any public comment considering this board appointment? There are none, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. May I have a, either announcements or a motion for adjournment?
Move adjourn.
Yes.
Future item, update on Kirby Park. The development of Kirby Park and Twenty-Ninth Street, future item, right.
Twenty-Ninth Street complex.
Yep.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now, you may take a break.